You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 16th meeting for the LaPorte County Budget Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the continuation of the budget workshops this evening for October 16th, 2025. This evening we'll be reviewing the solid waste budget, the LaPorte County solid waste budget for 2026, the LaPorte County budget for 2026, and a modification of local income tax rates for 2026. Each of these will have their own individual public hearing and public comment for the, for the subjects of each of those items independently. Mr. Otter, if you'd call the roll?
President.
Mike Mullenhauer.
Present.
Randy Novak.
Present.
Jimmy Pressel.
Present.
Mark Yagelski.
Present.
Everyone's here and accounted for. You have a quorum.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to open public hearing for LaPorte County solid waste budget for 2026.
Good evening, councilmen. As you're aware, this is a public hearing, so it's an opportunity for the public to come and address any concerns they might have. So after we see if the public has any concerns, if you'll close my public hearing, then I'll see you next month.
All right. Thank you for your questions, Sean. You're welcome to question.
Is the rate the same? What have the rates done? So everybody knows upfront.
You know, we're not a taxing district. We're strictly a user fee, and our user fee hasn't changed.
That's why, that's why I just wanted to confirm. So, yep.
Anybody from the public would like to speak?
You gotta come up to the mic. Come back, you gotta stand here. No.
No.
Clay, you need to be at the mic.
All I wanted to ask, and I can leave the rest of your meeting. I don't know nothing about nothing. All I want to ask is, someone told me-
Could you start with your name and where you live?
I live in LaPorte. My name's Joan.
Thank you.
And they said that taxes were going to go up another 20% to give to the emergency EMS. Is that not on the-
That is on the budget for later in the agenda, so we're gonna speak-
Number two, let me just finish and then I'll go. I thought we already paid for that two, three years ago, and someone told me it was never given to EMS. I don't know the difference. I'm old, I'm tired, just-
Okay. So we're gonna, Mr. Otter, if you'd like.
So first of all, this is out of turn, so if you don't mind, I just want to clarify, because she made a statement that's not correct. And so, the local income tax that you just said, it is a .2%, not 20%, .2, 0.2%. So it's only 2/10ths of a percent, okay? Three years ago in 2022, a public safety lit was passed. Yes, they received monies to cover a lot of different departments. However, in order to pay for things going forward, the EMS, the state allows us to break them out into their own local income tax. So, other, the sheriff's office has now been, is now being, using those funds that used to be in there, and now this will allow us, and we'll get into this more later, this will allow us to designate those funds directly for our EMS unit, and for their, and for their direct needs. We'll can talk about this at, when it's, at that time later, later this evening. Okay?
I'm just saying, I'm poor, and I know all of us in LaPorte are poor. 178 people just lost their job. Any new taxes, I think, is bad. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
678-2 East Hunter South, Mill Creek, County Commissioner, and also serve on a solid waste board. The user fees do need to increase. As you currently know what's going on out there, it's a mess, it's, it's gonna cost more money to clean up afterwards. So I'd just like to know, I mean, it happened at the wrong time of the year with the budget cycle coming on, but user fees are gonna have to increase out there to make that place more self-sustaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public on behalf of the LaPorte County solid waste budget for Going once, going twice. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you, councilmen. See you next month for the adoption hearing. In between, if you need any information, please reach out.
Now, when you say next month, are you coming on the 27th or next month?
It would, no, you're correct, I'm sorry.
Next meeting.
It's next meeting on the 27th.
Just wanted to clarify.
We only do one reading for mine, so I'll be done and gone.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, down to the public hearing for LaPorte County budget for 2026. Public hearing is now open for any comments from the public regarding this budget.
Good evening, County Commissioner Joe Haney. Just really quickly, one quick item from last night. Last night, the county opted, or the Board of Commissioners voted 2 to 1 to opt out of the Health First Indiana Fund. I believe that what's been, what was advertised in your budget included to have that amount in it for next year. So, I brought this up to Chief Deputy Winsky last night, and she said she was gonna look into it today, so I just wanted to bring, bring to your attention there maybe some advertising that was done in there.
I spoke to Amanda just minutes ago, on the way here, about another thing, and she said that the number she put in-
Did not include.
Did not include. That's not what she said.
Instead, the levy is, is in place for the health department, so it's advertised as it would need to be if you were exiting Health First Indiana.
It is, okay.
She submitted her budget to reflect not being part of it. Okay.
Okay, fantastic.
We're on the same page.
Looking on the state portal.
All right, we're saying a different.
Very, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Are you allowed to speak more than one?
Different hearing, different hearing.
I read my rules.
I'm giving you a hard test.
678-2 East Hunter South, also County Commissioner. A lot of talk, people coming in, that possibly next year is gonna be a study, efficiency study done about possibly cutting jobs. I reiterate this multiple times over the last year, you do not need to cut jobs, but as people retire, you really need to seriously consider whether you replace those jobs or not. I've argued with Councilman Cunningham a couple times over the last few years when he was still here. Technology is used to cut jobs, except government doesn't seem to be cutting jobs in the use of technology, and we spend a lot of money on technology. I would rather see you guys not replace jobs as they retire. That way, no one loses a job in this economy right now, so the act of attrition, I wish, I hope you guys would consider that for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further members of the public? Public comment is now closed.
You do the first reading on this if you'd like.
Let's go with the first reading, then Mr. Otter.
So you would need to make a motion to read by title only, which is just to say that it's the budget, and then you go.
Make a motion to read by title only.
Motion by Mr. Castle, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of reading by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you, Mr. Otter.
This is the budget for LaPorte County for 2026. Then the first reading. Now you need to make a motion to first reading.
You, you just read it, you don't-
I read, I read the-
No, but it's what I'm saying, you don't vote on the first reading and vote on the second reading, you vote on the second, right? You read it.
Yes.
The first reading, you vote on the second. Right.
So, Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recall to solid waste budget and read by title only for vote of solid waste budget for 2026.
Second.
Well, I, you really don't have to, solid waste, you're rubber, rubber stamp, basically.
Well, but it's still on our agenda.
No, no, that was wrong. That was my mistake. Yeah, it was wrong.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, you just gotta approve it when it comes back.
All right. Moving on, public hearing for modification of local income tax rates for 2026. Public comment is now open for the public hearing. Any members of the public who want to speak on behalf of local income tax rates?
Jim Marseille, 6764W, 700 South. Here today, of course, to speak about this tax. Three and a half years ago, the county council approved a 52% increase in the local income tax from .95 to 1.45%. Countywide, this raised total tax revenue by nearly $13 million a year, projected at about $130 million over a 10-year period. County's portion of the tax receipts amounted to about half that, with the cities of Michigan City and LaPorte receiving most of the rest. Going into the election year of 2026, I was surprised to learn of another proposed increase in this local income tax following the huge increase of three years ago. The proposed increase would put our local income tax rate at 1.65%, just over three times greater than neighboring Porter County's rate of a half percent, which has not changed during this period of time. Their lower rate would seem to give them a continued advantage that encourages future growth and development in their tax base. Three and a half years ago, I advocated for this council to have greater transparency on government decision-making as a way of promoting greater trust in government and the processes for decision-making. While meetings are open and minutes are published with financial information, I'm sorry, improvements could be made to make county meeting packets available online with financial information, including the budgets and actual expenditures regularly provided, at least at a summary level. You know, we just had the public comment period for budgets, and there could have been more comment had a budget been posted out there on the website, so that county people could look and see what was being proposed. Longer-range financial projections used to guide decisions, like tax levies and income tax rates, would also be helpful for taxpayers and voters, and it might better justify the case for changes in taxes in the future. I'm aware the council tried to take a step in the direction towards greater public availability of information in a vote taken just last year, but progress has been limited in getting that information out to the public since then. I again encourage efforts towards greater transparency, along with the use of longer-range financial plans that clearly show sources and uses of tax revenue, with the idea that the status quo budgeting can be challenged, and taxpayers reassured that county funds are being used wisely. In the interim, I'd support the council sharing key performance indicators used to evaluate departments and countywide effectiveness, looking at things like comparative expenditures per capita among counties similar to size or larger than our own, possibly at shared services that could reduce costs where nearby counties might cooperate with certain services, and whether some services could be outsourced or possibly insourced to save funds. Proposals that could either eliminate or reduce this proposed local income tax by half or more could be further examined in light of longer-range steps you are considering to evaluate and possibly restructure departments or county operations to further save on costs. So in closing, I'm just saying, maybe we don't have to do the full .20 if we make a more modest adjustment, if that's prudent to be required. That's better for taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good evening, Tom Dermody, 1658 South Willow Bend Drive, LaPorte, Indiana. And I was here, I think I just heard, three years ago, where we worked together as we talked about increase in public safety lit. And we did that because we, Michigan City, the county, all had a true issue of community safety. Thanks to you, thanks to our city, and thanks to your requirement, when we were gonna pass a lit that you required us to go, I think Mr. Yagelski required me to go to every township, every city, for approval before you would all pass an increase. Times are now tough. We see NIPSco increases, we see grocery increases, and the one thing that you that were at some of our meetings with Baker Tilly or other groups, we can't be willy-nilly just beginning to increase tax on our residents. We have to look together at how we can be more efficient, how we can do things differently, and the main area of how we're gonna get out of this tax situation, because taxes are gonna continue to reduce in property taxes, and I support that. We have seniors that need to be able to stay in their homes. I think we have a fair balance of public safety, income tax, but we have to stay competitive. And I know you're in a tough spot, I know the commissioners, and while I may not agree with what they did last evening, I respect, and it's not a fight, but we have to be open to growth versus increasing taxes. And as I look, in 2025, the public safety lit, you're gonna increase to 2026, $300,000. You're also going to receive increases of $200,000 to your certified shares, $300,000 to economic development, for roughly between that and the public safety lit, $800,000. Plus, you've gotten 1.7 in supplemental this year, I assume you're gonna get something next year. We all have to work together, and our school systems in Michigan City and LaPorte are the key to our future. They're going to be in 2026 going out for referendums because of their reductions, and that's their only opportunity to improve education by increasing funding and doing the things that they need to do. I would ask you to please hold off on the .20 increase, find ways to work together, our firefighters work every day with your team at no charge, to come out and help your team. But right now, with the economy the way it is, and on behalf of the LaPorte Schools Superintendent and School Board President, they're in also opposition of an increase to .2. You asked me, and we did, go to every township, face the board, face the public for approval, and the rumors that, you know, waiving the, the rules to pass everything tonight, you need to do what you asked me to do, and talk to the public and hear their concerns. Get out there, it'll be worthwhile, and I think you'll find that people aren't ready for another public safety or income tax increase, because if you take the $73,000 on average family income, it's about $132 a year, an increase that could go to grocery bills, NIPSco bills, and other things. So, we will work with you to find efficiencies. We worked with our efficiencies and our budget. We couldn't give police and fire everything they wanted. You have to make difficult choices during these tough times, and I would ask you to open up, work with us, and see where we can work together. If EMS needs help from our firefighters and we need to take over some things, let's talk about it. But I don't think we can continue to increase tax right now. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions or comments that you may have. And I do want to say thank you for the fire support, it was a great team effort. We do work together. Commissioners are in a different direction than us last night, I'm in a different direction that you might be tonight, but that doesn't mean we all can't work together and be respectful.
One thing I want to address is the, the rumor that we're trying to force something through on a first, on a single-night vote, at least from my perspective as president of the council, is not our intent.
And remember, I was the one that came here to increase the tax, so I get it.
It would require unanimous consent in order to pass an ordinance and whatnot, I don't think, that's not there.
And that's good to know. But I would ask what you asked of us, to go to all the trustee boards for their approval.
It was the towns and the cities, not the townships. Townships?
No, it was. I went to every-
I think there was 12. There were 12.
I went to Michigan City, LaPorte, Westville, and the township boards, because Mr. Yagelski, that was his, his requirement, and I respect it now, and I think it brought out-
I knew there were 13 of them, but I thought it was.
I thought so. And he still voted no.
We knew that going in, so, yeah.
All right. Any other questions, comments from the council? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Alan Stevens, 5277 West, 1475 South Hannah. Permission to approach?
Absolutely. Oh, boy.
That's scary.
But the record show that Mr. Stevens is handing each of us a pencil sharpener.
Do you bring the pencils? Because I got pencils.
Do the kids that you took these from know that you took them?
What I've handed all seven of these gentlemen and the auditor is a pencil sharpener. Pack of 12 was a dollar at Dollar Tree downtown. I would encourage each of you seven to take your pencil out, put it in there, and get it good and sharp, and take another look at the budget, take a look at the county, the way we operate, and think about how we can trim a little fat off this hog. Now, I can't speak for you seven, but in my household, we don't spend more than we make. When things get tight, we tighten the belt. We don't have an unlimited supply of taxpayer money that we can keep going back to. So, this wheel tax coming in the future, this EMS lit, this is the low-hanging fruit. Okay? This is the easy way out. It's right there, we grab it. There's $8 million, we can throw that at EMS, and then we take the $8 million we're giving EMS, and we throw it in the general fund, and we get to live another year, kick the can down the road. That's not acceptable. All seven of you gentlemen are way smarter than that, way smarter than that, and I would challenge you to sharpen your pencil and cut some fat off this hog and say no to the tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members, members of the public like to speak?
Ray Maloney, 206 Moore Road in Michigan City. I attended the wheel tax hearing in Michigan City, where we raised wheel tax. There wasn't much of a argument to stop it, it seemed like a foregone conclusion. I attended a hearing and voiced my opposition to that. I also, last Friday, with my colleagues from the Michigan City Conservative Action Group, we conducted a presentation on property taxes. We talked with people in various communities, including Trail Creek. Trail Creek saw a 62% average increase in their property taxes over the last five years. We have people in Trail Creek and other towns that are worried about losing their homes because they can't pay their property tax bill. I also read the article today, I think it appeared yesterday in the Herald, about this effort right now to raise that .2% or 0.2% increase. I noticed SB1 came up in the end of the article, so there's gonna be more shortfalls with both Michigan City and LaPorte and various towns in LaPorte County, because the property tax allocation's being changed. And so we're gonna be looking at other ways of raising taxes on people. The mayor, I, I agree with, with what Mayor Dermody said, but he did make one statement that I would challenge, and he said you can improve, or we may have a referendum coming in Michigan City for schools. The only way you can improve schools is to have a referendum. Well, I would totally disagree with that. I don't think you simply, I don't think you just can improve schools simply by raising taxes. There's, there's other things you can do aside from raising taxes. So I think we all agree that that's true. When it comes to governing, real governing, means paying your bills and living within your means. That's what all the citizens have to do, and that's what I think myself and my colleagues would ask, you know, not to raise the tax. I think we're squandering an amazing opportunity right now, an opportunity to not raise taxes, to prove to ourselves and every other state and county and city in the region that we're the more responsible, efficient government. We can show that responsible leadership means solving problems without reaching deeper into taxpayers' pockets. Let LaPorte County be the example, the no-new taxes option that, that others look to when they realize you can fund priorities through discipline, creativity, and accountability, not just higher taxes. What Alan said, totally agree with it, it seems like a no-brainer. You gotta cut that .2% you're looking to fund with taxes, cut it out, and we move forward. But again, with all the taxes that are gonna be coming our way, I think we really gotta get ahead of this issue. I don't think we want to be the next Illinois where people are fleeing to get rid, away from high property taxes, and high taxes in general. I think we can capitalize on being next Illinois, and we can remain and lead the way. I think Indiana can lead the way, and we, as a group, with our property tax initiative, we proposed a 2% cap. This would be a statewide issue, or a statewide regulation, 2% cap on property tax increases from the previous year, 2%. And this would only apply to seniors and those on fixed incomes, and it would only apply to their primary residents. Let's get bold on something like that. That's what I think we should be thinking about. The last thing we should be thinking about is raising taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Bill Newton, 604 Black Oak Drive, and I'm in Trail Creek. And I got involved with this mainly because of a neighbor, I'm the precinct committee man up there. And so they called me and they said, have you seen your green sheet, which is the, the assessment that comes out? And I said, no, I haven't. In fact, I didn't even have it at that time, I didn't get it till the following day. And, but I noticed that the land value is what went up, 64%. The structure value went up about 6%, and then the total, which is the bottom line, went up about 13%, okay? So because of that, I took the initiative just to track, you know, my precinct, so I went to the four corners of the precinct, knocked on some doors, and said, okay, can I see your green sheet? And I showed them mine, and they said, sure. So they bought it out, you know, same thing, right? Almost, almost exactly the same increases that I saw mine and, and my neighbor. And so that made me, you know, look even harder. So, I ended up, at that time, I banged on 316 doors and found out it's across the board for Trail Creek Cool Spring Township, which is the southern part of Trail Creek. Okay, now, so we got some momentum going on this, and people are pretty upset about it. And so we had a, a meeting with, at the DAV, we, we met with the, the assessor, and she came out, Stacy came out, and was very kind, and explained what she could explain. And she said, well, if you really want to make changes, and I talked to Mike also, if you want to make changes, you really gotta talk to your legislator. So we did. Okay, so we talked to, my legislator at, at, still, is Pat Boy. you really got to talk to your legislator. So we did. Okay, so we talked to my legislator at still is Pat Boy. She's my rep. And then I have Rodney Poll as my senator. So we called him, and we had about an hour discussion with our group, the Michigan City Conservative Action Group. And he said, yeah, I do want to come out. And we got with your father. He wanted to come out, and that was his idea. It wasn't our idea. It was his. He wanted to expand our horizons. And he says, yeah, I want Mike Bahatchuk to be there. I want Jim Presle. I want him to be there. Chuck Mosley, I want him there, and of course, Pat Boy. And so we did. So that's the meeting he was talking about last Friday. And unfortunately, they had a mandatory meeting that they had to go to downstate for the Republicans. So the only two people we had was Pat Boy and Rodney Poll. And, but we had a good meeting. And people are upset, okay, in Trail Creek. I can tell you that because I banged on all these doors and they, you know, they're not all retirees. About 40% are retirees, but there are people also on fixed income that are younger. And, you know, you got people coming to the door, and you start talking about taxes, and before you know it, they have tears in their eyes. And they say, I can't pay anymore. You know, it's impossible to pay anymore. And they said, we really don't want to move out of here, but we don't have much choice. And I know two people that actually did on Johnson Road. They did actually move out because of taxes. They're just sick and tired of it, right? And everything. And I talked to this one guy, and he came from Illinois, and he says, what, he says, I've been through all this. I lived in Illinois. I've seen this stuff, you know, happen exactly like what you're seeing here now. And he says, I want to get involved with your group. And he says, because you got to stop the tax creep. And that's exactly what he called it. And he said, it's going to, you know, they say, oh, it's just 100 bucks a year, 200, you know, small, you know, small. And it is, right? And people can live with it, but then what happens when it gets to be $500 or $1,000, right? And then it starts doing that ratcheting stuff. And that's what, you know, got my attention. So I looked at these numbers today. I went to AI, just to exercise my ability on AI. And so I see we have a 0.5% for county adjusted gross income tax. We have another 0.5 for public safety local income tax, 0.45 for economic development income tax, and that adds up to currently what we're paying on income taxes, 1.45%, okay? So now we want to have this proposed 0.2%, which doesn't sound like much, right? But that brings the total up to 1.65%. So that ends up being a 13.8% increase, just about the same amount of money for some reason, right, that we saw on the creep on the assessment, about the same amount. So that's what gets me up here. So I'm wondering, you know, is there more creative ways that we can look at cutting back on expenses? You know, instead of coming up with all these creative ways of getting more money out of my pocket, right? Is there more creative ways of cutting back on expenses? So that's just what I wanted to bring up, and so there you go.
Real quick, sir.
Yeah.
If I may, sir.
Yes, Mr. Yagalski.
By the way, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just, if the land and everything else you said in the in the structure went proportionally, I can understand that. I've had the same, I have houses, plus I have rental houses. So I've had this debate with the assessor also. If that land did, if your land goes up 64%, that doesn't make any sense because we don't sell land in Michigan City or Trail Creek, you know, because we're pretty much, we're saturated. We don't, it doesn't come. It's not, it's not a commodity.
Right.
It's gone up.
Right.
It does, so that doesn't make much sense. Now, housing does, it changes, and I get that, and value goes up. I can understand that. Then those three numbers should have been proportional. They should not be 64% compared to the other numbers. I'm just trying to help you in your conversation. That makes no sense. I don't care how they explain it to you because, again, we do not sell land in LaPorte City, Michigan City, or Trail Creek.
Well, when I saw that figure, and I did the math, okay, and I've been involved with a lot of math, and I'm an engineer, okay?
Okay.
And I thought, what, they strike gold? I mean.
Understand. I just, as a friendly comment to you, that doesn't make any sense, as you all know.
The way it was explained, okay, is it doesn't, it doesn't really much matter. The number that matters is the total.
I know.
They don't really care about the land, the structure. They can massage those numbers as much as they want to, but it's the total that they're after.
It still doesn't.
That's how it was explained to me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And you should absolutely feel comfortable to go to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals, the PTA BOA. If you feel like your assessment is inaccurate, you do have the ability to appeal.
We've talked to many, many people about that. We even talked to the DLGF, whatever.
Yep, Department of Local Government Finance.
And, you know, we heard a lot of voices.
The one thing we don't do is assess the properties. That's the county assessor. So we don't have any control over the assessed value that is created out of this process.
Well, what really angered everybody, I hate to cut you off.
Go ahead.
But what angered everybody was, here I am in Cool Spring Township, okay? You cross Cool Spring Avenue, which is now, you know, the divider, and now you're in Michigan Township. You look at their green sheet, it remained flat.
They do this in.
That got a lot of people's attention.
The assessor can explain it better, but they do certain townships or taxing districts at different times, so they'll probably see something.
And they do like a rolling.
Yeah, so that's probably why they saw a different.
Well, you also have to keep in mind you have a separate assessor for Michigan Township.
That's true, too. Actually, that's an even more important point. It's worth pointing out that the, so we're, through our property tax process, the budget process, we set a levy, and we're only allowed to grow that levy by what's known as the MLGQ, the maximum levy growth quotient. Lately, the General Assembly has limited that to 4%.
Right. That's why we need to talk to the legislators.
Yeah, so our levy, the amount of funding that we're able to increase our tax levy by, is capped at 4%. People may see increases because there's shifting of the assessed value. And if you looked at a bunch of commercial properties, you would notice that collectively, commercial property assessments have gone down over the last decade, meaning that the burden is being shifted onto homeowners and other different types of property classifications.
But we're seeing, you know, I hate to, I'm not going to identify the guy that told me this, but one of the senators, he told me, he said, it's a game, okay? Because the state is trying to, you know, look like they're saving you some money, and so they're going to lower the state, right? But then they push the burden to where, you know, now it's going to go to the county, and then it goes to the cities, and then it goes to the municipalities, right? And everybody's got to play their little game, and then all of a sudden, that's why we got this wheel tax. Michigan City passed the, it's not a wheel tax for Michigan City. It's actually a vehicle tax of 25 bucks, I think it is. And, I mean, so it's the creep. That's the thing. We're starting to see the creep. And, you know, even if it's $5, well, it's $5 this year, but what's it going to be next year, right? So that's the thing I'm real concerned about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Maisely. I live at 622 Dogwood Drive in Trail Creek. I'm part of this group over here. I also was hit with a 64% property tax, excuse me, land value assessment and 27% on my house. I haven't done a thing to it. The only thing that happened in my yard, a tree fell down in one of the storms, and I had to pay to have it removed. Now, I'm a disabled veteran, total disability, 20-year disabled veteran. You know what my paycheck looks like? It goes up 2.7% again this year. My property taxes went up 362% in the last five years. 362%. Put a wheel tax on it, put all this other crazy stuff on it, add another 0.2%, how am I supposed to survive? I defended this country for 20 years, and you guys are going to tax me out of my house? This is ridiculous. Y'all should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Want to make sure that you're aware there is a property tax or assessed value deduction that's available for disabled veterans. There's some other stipulations about how you apply, but you might want to look into that.
Well, let's talk about that. Let's look at SB1. I was getting $14,000, $14,000, $28,000. Those all go away. I get a total of $525 in the next couple of years. So my assessed value went up, and my deductions went down $33,000. What did you do for me?
Yeah, I'm just letting you know that that's something that's available. Those things are all set by the General Assembly outside of our control.
$525 doesn't equate to about $40,000. No way, not in my math. Sorry to be crude, but it just really bothers me.
Completely understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good afternoon, still, I think, everyone.
Evening.
Never thought I'd say this, but, and now I'm supposed to look to the rear, but I agree with Tom Germany, Mayor Germany.
We got that on the record, just so you know.
Largely. Largely. Good afternoon. My name is Timothy Stabos, 1501 Michigan Avenue, and I had the honor of serving as LaPorte County Auditor from 2021 to 2024. As someone who had a front row seat for four years in almost every one of your meetings, I feel particularly qualified to comment on the matter at hand. I also want to acknowledge, before going any further, that it is true that funding mechanisms from the state have squeezed counties, mainly in terms of property tax circuit breaker caps, and that there is a loss of revenue that is real, which needs to be made up. Additionally, the county has suffered certain unusual and unexpected casualty losses the last few years, most notably the infamous flood of Christmas 2022, in the annex that have placed the burden on us. That having been said, this body is subject to serious, if not dire, criticism for its negligence in running the county the last five years. Not all of you, to be sure, but two of you in particular who have been here the longest. Mr. Yagalski, you've been here for over 20 years, and Mr. Novak, you've been here for over 10 years. In 2022, three of you who were here, Mr. Yagalski, Novak, and Mullenauer, messieurs, along with Mr.
Just the Democrats.
Rosenbaum, no, let me finish. Don't interrupt, please, sir. Along with Mr. Rosenbaum, who was then on the council, passed a 0.5% increase in the county income tax. The other four of you were not here. At the time, Mr. Rosenbaum in particular, as I recall, advocated for the need for an efficiency study, which would examine whether we were in line on our staffing levels broadly and relative to other counties, and whether and where there was fat to be cut. This study, or an in-house version of it, for those that don't like spending money on outside consultants, which I understand, was particularly important as it would have been a way to determine where the county could save money through letting attrition, I agree with Commissioner Hallifield, attrition in the ranks, reduce costs, where processes could be changed to make departments more effective, AI, et cetera. But such a study, internal or external, was never done. This is particularly problematic since wage-related expenses constitute roughly 75% of the property tax-based budget. Purportedly and troublingly, there has been a supposed hiring freeze since the Great Recession in 2010, which means ostensibly that department heads have to get every replacement position approved by the council before it is filled. Yet, as far as I can recall in my four years as auditor, the council has refilled all or virtually every single one of these positions. Worse, in the case, in my opinion, of politically connected office holders, such as the head of Human Resources and the current auditor, additional positions have been added, just when the county can afford it least. And now, a politically disfavored department head, it seems to me, the county treasurer, represents the first time I can recall seeing in five years that you're actually entertaining not filling a position, when you should have been looking at each and every hire with a fine-tooth comb for the last five years or more, to determine where savings could be had and to avoid this kind of historically unprecedented proposal, an increase in the county income tax three years after a one-half of 1% increase. Additionally, in late 2022, a salary study was conducted by Wagner, Irwin, and Scheel so that the county would have information to adjust salaries to be market-competitive on a position-by-position basis. But the council did literally nothing with that study, which means that the $40,000 spent was a waste of money. Worse, at the October 2022 council meeting, this auditor, myself as the then auditor, specifically recommended a no greater than 5% wage increase for 2023, and that the council wait for the results of the aforementioned salary study before proceeding beyond that. But then Councilman Rosenbaum spoke, assuring us that he had done his homework and that a 10% raise could be afforded, when it most certainly could not. As a result of this 10% raise which was given, employees end up getting no raise in 2024 and no raise in 2025. Jackrabbit stops and starts create instability. Our experience is a breach of faith by employees and resulted in losing employees and destroying morale. Is it any wonder the public resents a council when its two longest-serving members have taken a dismissive attitude, in my opinion, towards no-bid contracts that the state board of accounts has written us up for? With Mr. Novak, you in particular emphasizing publicly at these meetings.
This is public comment.
That, this is about, this is about the, why we, the tax situation, with you, that the responsibility for approving contracts is with the county commissioners and denying the need of the council itself to protect the public and use the council's power of the purse to mandate commissioners follow the law. Do we have any way of knowing how much money may have been wasted through single bidder contracts over the last five years or more, when the public cannot be assured that it got the fairest and best deal? What about the revenue side? During my time as auditor, it was emphasized that the county not only needs to control costs, especially in the area of hiring, as previously stated, but that the revenue side of the equation needs to be, needed to be looked at, too. A systematic council overseen review of services, fees, and fines from each and every county department was critical to ensure that we were keeping up with inflation on charges, that we were comparative with other counties, and that we were, at the very least, generally speaking, recouping our costs on services provided. This in a situation where some departments, as a matter of course, didn't update their service charges for years on end. Have there been some changes and updates in these fees and charges? Yes, there has. Has the effort been systematic and complete and thoroughly reviewed by the council? No, it has not. Importantly, and just about finished here, importantly, opportunities for significant revenue capture were foregone, where leadership was lacking. In one case, the president of the council, I literally begged the president of the council a few years ago, more than once, that we get together in a meeting with the prior county treasurer, and impart on her the importance of taking advantage of the higher interest rates paid on deposits to invest county money properly and earn the returns that the market afforded, rather than the 1.5% that we were getting from our bank, which I, incidentally, had gotten up to 3% in March of '23 with a simple phone call, but which was still 1 and 1/2 to 2% below then-market rates. As an investment professional for a living, by my own careful calculations, the county has foregone over $3 million in interest income it could have earned during my tenure as auditor if the treasurer had simply been held accountable by the council and its president. Many of you weren't here during that time period. I understand that. But that didn't happen. She wasn't, and the public was short-changed. The current treasurer has fixed that. I bring all of these things up because this is the reason we are here tonight. The ineptitude of earlier councils, the negligence, in my opinion, the irresponsibility and the lax oversight. But I want to emphasize, not all of you here. We are here tonight because certain council people are seeking an increase of 0.2%. I believe the proposal originally came from the auditor watching public meetings in the county income tax. After a 0.5% increase, that's 50% just three years ago in 2022. Not merely because of the property tax circuit breakers hamstringing us or unusual casualty losses to the county, which I acknowledge, but again, because of fiscal irresponsibility. What I say is, it is time for the council to become responsible. I'm against this income tax increase as it is presented because it is first time for this council to show the public that it is able to do its job, sharpen its pencils, if you will, and that it can tell us that it's collecting all the revenue it reasonably can and should through other ways. And that on the cost side, especially in both personnel cost and following the public bidding statutes, that we are doing everything we can. Until the council can show all of these things and truly do its job, is a breach of faith with the public to pass this tax at this moment, at this time, a mere three years after three of you sitting here voted to raise the income tax by over 50%. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Novak?
I just want to, I just want to point out, the only thing I got to say is, for the last five years, the Republicans have controlled the council and the commission. So to sit here and think that two people are responsible for that, the Republicans have been in control of the council for the last five years. So.
Any other members of the public?
Good evening again, Councilman Joe Haney, LaPorte County Commissioner, again, before you. Shortly, you're going to be considering this new. Shortly, you're going to be considering this new tax, a dedicated levy to fund our emergency medical services. I share multiple concerns with any tax increase, especially amid the economic hardships that are facing our taxpayers currently, from rising costs, stagnant wages, and family budgets being stretched thin. I do, however, recognize the tough spot the state legislature has put municipalities in by slashing funding, and I do hope that they're going to take a second look at this in the upcoming sessions. My biggest worry, though, is, as Auditor Rosenbaum recently described it at a former council meeting, is another, quote, "shell game." With so many new faces on the council since the last tax hike a couple of years ago, it's worth recalling a few of those shortcomings. I warned back when the Public Safety Local Income Tax was first proposed that it might shift funds rather than add true, true new resources. And under former council president Novak's leadership, that's exactly what happened. Instead of adding new tax dollars fueling fresh public safety investments, large chunks of it were used to cover existing bills, freeing general fund money then for non-safety purposes. Our EMS deserves better. We need infrastructure upgrades at our Michigan city base, as well as Wantata, new ambulances, which certainly are not coming down in price, and competitive wages to retain our exceptional EMTs and paramedics. We also need to increase those salaries to be able to attract fresh new talent, to reduce the overtime burnout that some of, some of our staff are experiencing. If you approve this EMS tax, I implore you, include ironclad language to avoid past mistakes. Mandate that every dollar raised creates new spending firewall directly for, for new EMS enhancements, and with transparent reporting to ensure that we're properly reinvesting into the best service in Indiana. I thank you for your consideration on this, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
I'll just reiterate, the Republicans have been in charge for the last five years. So to sit here and insinuate that one person up here has control, you know better than that, Joe. So tell the truth. Five years, five years, control.
Mr. Councilman, for five of the last six years, you were council president, correct? Five of the last six years, you were council president?
No, four of the last, I think, four of the last five. Yeah, I was, but the president, the president doesn't, the president to insinuate that there's a shell game going on by me and that I'm a proven butt?
I'm saying the former council.
It's all, it's, have a seat. I'm good, it's good.
I implored the council last time, and I implore you again, if you're going to raise taxes under the guise of supporting EMS, that all those new dollars go to fund new EMS expenditures and not, again, play a shell game.
Joe, Joe, you need to stop because, you need to stop because it's not true what you're saying. It's not true what you're saying. So state the truth. It's not a shell, there was no shell game by me, and to insinuate that a president can move money or do something without the rest of the council? You can't, to play a shell game is absolute BS, Joe.
Guys.
No. I'm done, I'm done.
Mr. Haney.
I'm done. You, you put on your show, you put on your show, you don't even know what's going to.
Mr. Novak.
No.
All right. Understood. Okay. Any other members of the public?
I have one, one thing I want to add. The mayor stated that he went to townships. It never was townships that it was going to. It was cities and towns. There wasn't a township that was in, because townships aren't shared in the Public Safety Lit. Just want to clarify that. You did, you did 12 places, and it was, you did a great job on that, but it wasn't townships, so.
All right. Public hearing is now closed. At this point, I'll entertain any discussion. Any comments from the council at this point related to proposed increase to, to lit structure? Mr. Yagalski.
Sorry, he's a lit only right now?
Well, at this point, we're talking about the.
We're staying in that cup, I'm sorry.
Regarding this particular local income tax.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, if that, we'll talk about.
I'll do the lit.
All right. Mr. Yagalski.
Now, I guess, I already told him the senior person, so I guess I'll go first. I know that I've talked to many of the council members, not as much to, to gentlemen, my right left, because they just came in this year, but I've talked to everybody else about these subject matter. I have expressed my opinion every, every budget hearing. I started this meeting out going, this year's meeting going out for next year, that we needed to reduce the cost, and we had used the pencil sharpener idea. It's fine, I'm okay with that. I mentioned about Switzerland County, who reduced it by 10% last year because they were in that, that type of need, and they had to do it. And I understood why, and it's tough decisions to make. You asked, I talked to you guys individually, that a few years back, I asked for a 10% reduction, and Mike, I think we lowered it down to 5%, if I remember, across the board. It was 10 and it went to 5%, sir.
Went to 5%.
To 5%. So we cut 5% across the board, and, and the first two people came up, it was tough. And then by everybody else, they knew what was going to happen, they walked up, and we got a reduction by that year. I did not have fun with Mr. Cunningham, and I, voting all those last couple of years, no, apparently other people have different opinion about what I did, but voting, voting no. This no is not because I want to joke about it. This is not a laughing matter. I think that I've said many, many times to a lot of you that we need to get our, our ship back in the right direction, which I believe we have not over the years. It's not criticizing any individual or anybody else, but I know I've clearly stated why, why I was doing what I was doing, Mr. Cunningham, the same, but I also, I also had alternatives how you could do things, and suggest, some suggestions. So I just want to make sure that you guys understand, yeah, there'll be a no vote this, when it's things proposed, this was not proposed by a councilman. It was proposed by Mike Rosenbaum, I agree. But it'll be a no vote, and it's not a no vote again, just to go ahead and laugh about it, it's because I really mean it, and I meant it all along. So thank you for your time.
Any other discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion regarding the ordinance.
There's no mo, we're not voting on it.
I'll offer up some, some discussion.
What? It's first reading, but I'm, go ahead.
So I think there was, I took a whole sheet of notes from all the different comments that were shared, and a lot of good input. I appreciate people's feedback on, on this. And I think there's some things that definitely should be considered before us, before we move forward with any increase, if at all. Just pulling through some of these, the efficiency study, I think it's worth actually moving forward with it, hire an outside consultant who's not going to be politically influenced to pick favorites in certain offices, who actually go through office by office and determine whether or not they're as efficient as they could be, look at comps from other counties, and thoroughly review it and make recommendations to us that are published for the public to see, and then they can see whether or not we actually follow through with them. Mr. Marseille mentioned the transparency, improving the transparency around this. I agree. I like to see the packets. We did a vote to put those on the website before. We haven't followed through with that. We make a lot of decisions. There's a lot of information that we are privy to. We get a whole stack of papers that help inform our decisions, but when the public can't see them, they're, they're left without the full picture. And I think we need to get back to putting the packets online so people can see them, and being more transparent in what we're doing with funds. Some of his other suggestions were also great. I like the key performance indicators, comparing with other counties, so we have an idea about where we're moving. Fee review was a suggestion that was brought up. I know some departments have reviewed their fees, the building department has, the health department has. I've encouraged several of them to look at those, but we don't have a uniform process in place to make sure that we're keeping up with inflation, and that's how we get behind. And then there's a perception that we're making huge jumps, but in reality, we went sometimes 15 years without increasing fees, which isn't really a good way to run business. No other business is going 15 years without raising their fees. And then I think there is a question about, should we be going with a full 0.2% increase, or should we be looking at something less as a starting point, if at all? So I'd like to see before the next meeting, a revised ordinance that incorporates some of these, so that if we should raise the income tax, there are some serious changes that actually happen to make sure that we're making cuts in the future. The challenge of this is making cuts fast enough. If, if we were to not do any increase at all, making changes fast enough in order to keep the budget working for next year is going to be incredibly challenging. But, I mean, we, there's seven of us. I would like to hear if, if there's members in favor of, of the lit. We should share those reasons with people. We didn't really have an introduction about why this is even being considered in the first place, aside from in previous meetings when it was mentioned.
Because it was thrown at us. That, this was not introduced by any council member here. This was thrown at us. So yes, I didn't have the information either. I was, I was questioned by the public. I go, I have no idea what you're talking about. So yes, I totally agree with you. Did you know about it? Well, neither did I.
The details are not.
They were not there.
They materialized more recently.
I could agree with you more.
Mr. Novak.
So I just want to, when we had to do the Public Safety Lit prior, as Mayor Tom mentioned and Councilman Yagalski mentioned, there was a big charge put on the mayor to go around to all the different cities and towns to make sure that this is exactly what the county wanted, and everybody supported this. I, I would strongly urge that we do something similar to that and possibly, and this came out at a leap meeting the other day, too, is, is possibly have a meeting with all the leaders in La Porte County of the cities, towns, and different things, because with everything that's happened with Senate Bill One and all the changes that are happening, it's, it's going to be, Michigan City puts in a, a wheel tax. La Porte already has a wheel tax. You know, we put in a Public Safety Lit. Now we're looking at doing an EMS Lit. And then, and then Long Beach, because they're opening it up, different towns, everybody can add it, so it's going to be all over the road. We need to come together as a, as a county and look at this to make sure we're doing what's best, that we need to do, with the minimal impact on our citizens. So I would strongly urge that we pause on this and with the lit tax, and I, I do not support it, because I think we need to do what we did before and do our due diligence to make sure that it's right.
One solid note that I, that came out of both comments from elected officials, Steve, I'm looking directly at you for this one. If we look at an attrition for reduction, it ends up biased towards where do we have our aging employees or, or employees that move on to different areas? Not necessarily where do we have the departments that can be reduced because of efficiencies, because of workload, those sorts of things? And then the movement of employees from one department to the next in order to level that out becomes, I'm going to say, difficult as being the easiest portion or easiest descriptor for it. Working within departments that are not, that are elected officials, are led by elected officials individually, are going to, to hold on to their areas, and of course, you've got all your department heads that are, that are hired by the commissioners at that point. So that's where I strongly believe, whether we pass this or not, that we have an efficiency study that I would recommend that is under the purview of the council. Therefore, we don't have any of the reporting through the Board of Commissioners, who happen to have employees and departments that report to them, or any of the elected officials that have a department to run on their own. That way, we're understanding where that, those cuts can be made in terms of running more efficiently as a county. It's just my suggestion, my perception. Any other comments from council? Mr. Kessler.
And I will piggyback on that. As many of you know, I'm involved with the extension and stuff with Purdue, and every county has always had a, whether extension agent, N R, and all the other classifications we have. At this time, Purdue's undergoing studies, and they're, they've got two districts in the state that are now having multifunction people cover two or three counties. So when we're looking at this in-house, we got to look at having two or three people, maybe auditor treasurer's office, county highway, sheriff's depart, you know, sharing positions. And so, I mean, when we look at efficiencies, and Steve, I'm right there with you, I mean, you know, take one belt off, put the next one on, right? So I totally agree with that as, as we look at more of these efficiencies.
I want to add also, in the email that we received from Auditor Rosenbaum the other day, it outlines potential ways that the EMS Lit would be spent, and 2.1 million of that was to go towards salaries for the 3% raise that has been discussed previously during our, our budget hearings. Now, in the budget that has been advertised, there's $5.1 million worth of revenue coming from this EMS Lit. If it's not approved, how are the raises being done? We now have 10 days, I think, it's about 10 days, 10, 11 days, to figure out how that's going to be shifted around.
Yep. Solid points. Any other comments?
General consensus up here is we need to pump the brakes and look at what we're going to do before we jump into this.
Thank you.
I agree, and with the president's comment a few minutes ago about the study and a couple of the others, I agree. But it's, it's a study that, I guess I've been involved in some, hearing about some other studies in the past, and then they're just, if it's not what you like, it's kind of gets ignored, and we can't let that happen. And I think what you mentioned about, we have to take action. If, if there is a study and they recommend some cuts, we're going to have to be tough about it, and you can do that through attrition. We have people leaving, but we just got to, we just can't get the study and then just kick it, kick it under the table.
To add a comment to that, it comes down to responding to the data in front of us, but you can create different strategies on how you respond to that, right? You can still follow the guidance. It doesn't necessarily mean a, okay, so it'd be, you know, it's, there's written, and now you follow it that day.
Yep.
Right. Mr. Auditor, you were asking for time.
First of all, I started this conversation back in June about needing this, because we would need serious cuts. I also saw the fact that some things were under budgeted in the past, and that's noted in that email, one of them being payroll taxes when perf, and now you have medical insurance that was under budgeted by a million dollars, and now the additional medical insurance is $1,014 more than it was the year before. So these are some of the facts that I shared with you. You kind of put us here in the situation because we didn't cut, and the best way to be able to pay for these things was, this was the only option that was available to us. So this is also a two-year plan, gives us time to do a study, gives us time to take, gives you time to take action on that study, and in the year 2027, for 2028, there's a whole new ballgame. This doesn't stay the way it is. So this completely changes. And so while we wait for the legislature to see if they're going to make any additional changes, this is the only way out for this council, because to move 5.1 million back into the budget, not have money to do any work on any of the enhances that we need to do, not being able to buy an ambulance without borrowing money, not being able to redo the Michigan City or the Wantata facilities for EMS without borrowing money, and, and this is a $3 a week thing for the next two weeks for families. So while we're here, we'd have to take other serious cuts. And I'd be happy to take the pencil sharpener, sharpen the pencil, and tell you where we can make cuts, but we've also suffered that we've been limited to 4% increases for the last several years, and that I was on the council, too. Meanwhile, inflation was higher, but the worst part was is that people weren't following inflation. Our vendors were charging us 5% more every year. So you do that for six years, and now you're up 30%, and that's not even compounded. Okay, so you're not up 24%, you're up 30%. So now you're already up higher, and this happened across the board. So sometimes we gave big raises. My information, what study I got, I got that information from the auditor's office. So I could throw stuff right back at somebody. I don't want to do that, but that's where the information came from, because I had no other resource of information to make that, that decision or that thought pattern. I thought it was already in the budget for 5% and thinking that another 5% might have been eligible, but then other people started adding 15% and other things. Anyway, we talked about, we are, we have been talking with all the different departments on trying different ways to save money and to go and review their fees. This is not a conversation that you might not, you might not know about. So this discussion's been going on with other departments. There was an earlier thing that you, the president, Mr. Karanka, went and spoke with Juvenile Service Center to, to really start digging into how they were, what their funds were, and we need to follow up on that. We need to continue those types of things that you said, and we need to be able to look and get information to see what money is coming. and get information to see what money is coming in and what money we need to help pay to provide those services and is there other ways to get money? We're constantly seeking grants, but going out there and getting me a $500 grant for one of our departments, it costs us more to administer it than the $500 that they got. So we've gotta be smart about what we're doing. So we're at a crossroads tonight, gentlemen. You either do this or we have a serious budget cut because that's what tonight's about. It's not, I'm not trying to put a bullet to your head, I'm ready to sharpen the pencil, but you're gonna have to make some serious decisions and promises that you made can't be kept.
Mr. Attorney.
I usually try not to comment, but I want to echo Mr. Mullenauer's comments. We've had study after study, bridge studies bypassed a decade I sat here before, they all got shelved, they all got just thrown in the box and I'm not exaggerating, the great multitude, the study was done, the money was spent and nothing happened, okay?
So, go ahead, Nelson.
Second point I want to make, the decade I sat here before, you'd have department heads come and when a contract work out, okay, it'll save us money, it'll save us staff. All those contracts, all those years, Mark, you remember, and I never saw a cut once. So the county started spending money to have contractors do work that staff used to do and none of the staff ever got cut. We just spent more money. I'm saying that to the newer councilmen because I don't think you're aware that that went on for so long and I think it still does to an extent.
Yep. So, I'm gonna ask for advice. When it comes to past practices and my proposal for any sort of study to be done under the purview of the council, is it first legal, is it second, has it ever been done?
Unlegal?
Yes.
No. But I'm not sure you...
No, no, no. I guess what I mean is it's entirely legal for us to, for the council to pay for, fund and follow up on an efficiency study of the entire county?
Yes, but I think the efficiency study should include contractors and the contracts we have out there because I think the county spends a lot more money than we realize on outside contractors and consultants.
All right.
Should be bifurcated.
And it's, this is not something that has been done previously in your years as attorney?
Yeah, not in this category, no.
Okay. Thank you.
So... I make a motion, we look into the efficiency study.
A motion on the floor by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer and Mr. Keel, all in favor of moving forward on an efficiency study under the, I'm gonna put some words in your mouth, I want you to shake your head and acknowledge us, under the purview of the council?
Discussion.
Absolutely.
All right. Discussion.
Thanks. I'm sorry, who's second?
Mullenauer and Keel.
Thank you.
I'm agreeing, I think that we should, but let's just, I think that we had to do something like we did here with other things. I'd like to see a couple of people be appointed to this thing, what we want to be studied, not just go and say, okay, what do we, you have to go out and get this from somebody. It sounds good to say this, but we have to be efficient on what we're gonna ask and what, so I would suggest that we say yes with a caveat such that you're gonna appoint a couple of people to put it in one or two pages with what the company is expecting.
Scope of work.
Yeah, scope of work, thank you, thanks for the word.
Nor...
I appreciate you doing that, thank you. But no, seriously, if you guys are gonna do this, I'm not gonna vote for something that just says, okay, let's just hire somebody and we're not talking about what we want to hire and the purpose of hiring.
I agree.
I agree completely that we should talk about it to flesh out the details. I don't think it should be put into a committee, I think it should be all of us and I think it should be public so people can see exactly how we're scoping this right from the beginning.
We could post any you want to post, we're not afraid of the public, yeah, then you can do it.
I think you're saying, got people get together to just come up with what we think.
All seven of us.
Right.
So do it during a regular council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess maybe the motion should be directed that we ask the auditor's office to bring us some firms with some examples of prior work and start the process of looking for someone that can do this work for us. Is that like a more directed approach?
Is that your amendment?
Sure.
Second amendment.
All right.
I guess I just get one other comment. These are gonna be hard decisions, they're gonna have to be made, just like when we, when I made the motion to make any new employee pay 20% of the insurance up from the 15% and there was resistance from some people up here. So, I mean, these are tough things that we have to, they're gonna have to be decided. So, and like, you know, through attrition. So to make up $5 million, I mean, that's a lot of employees that would have, I mean, we gotta revamp everything, so. So it's time to roll up our sleeves.
If the cuts aren't introduced at the budget adoption, then, correct me if I'm wrong, but it'll end up at the 1782 notice, the state will mandatorily make cuts where it's not feasible, where the numbers don't work.
If the numbers don't work, there'll be serious conversations over the next week with DLG.
Okay.
Please keep us in the loop on those.
But, I implore you to, I'm gonna add something before. Now, Mrs. Dermody went around because we were requesting and I was on the council, so I can say we, we really wanted to know that each of these people, each of these taxing authorities that were going to receive money really wanted it. So you're the only taxing authority on this one, there's nobody else. So if you want to share and you want to have a meeting with other people, that's fine, but you're, but this is, the only people benefiting this is the county.
But they're all gonna pay.
And again, these tax cuts should have taken place in the last several months, we've had enough meetings for that.
We didn't ask for it.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor and I'm gonna try to summarize this as best I can. Within a minute. That we have a council purview consultant do an efficiency study where it's a scope of work is derived by the entire council during a workshop or other meeting and we capture that report and act accordingly. And there was something you mentioned about the auditor, Mr. Keel, and I want to make that.
Yeah, that we're requesting the auditor bring us some firms with prior work experience that's related to this.
Okay.
And that the council will follow the recommendation of the...
And the council will follow the recommendation.
Good, the bad, the ugly.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So now we have a discussion related to a first reading of an ordinance or are we moving on?
I think we read it.
That's what I'm entertaining.
I'm really springing up, making a motion to read the ordinance as...
Title only.
As title only.
Title only.
Second.
Motion, second to read by title only, discussion?
Yeah, so for the public's sake, can we explain, we're reading this into the record so it's being introduced and what does that mean then, next?
We have to decide, vote, you vote, you do one thing first, then you do the second thing next.
It's a public hearing and then...
What you do.
Just read the ordinance.
We have to...
How it works.
If you do...
No decisions are made.
Yeah, if you do a first reading tonight, that will keep the calendar rolling, okay?
So it's preserving the optionality of passing a lit in the future.
Nothing's passed, but it just keeps the deadlines on time.
You would need to have a majority tonight to keep it alive and then it can be killed if that's what you so choose to do at the next meeting.
There's no vote tonight, so there's no majority.
On the first reading, there's a vote.
No, there, well, well...
Mr. Attorney.
I don't, I don't agree.
You do a first reading and you vote on the second one.
Okay, then we'll do it that way.
Right. It's what we did on the other two. I mean, unless you want to, we can stick it now.
So Doug, you weren't quite clear up here. You're saying on a vote for first reading?
You could just do the first reading, you don't have to take a vote on it, you could vote, you want the first reading and then that's it, we're done and that won't, what I don't want to happen is you guys discuss this further, decide we want to do this and now we've blown all our timelines. Nothing's passed tonight and we could still stay on track with our timeline.
I'm agreeing, whether I'm gonna vote for it or not has nothing to do with it, we gotta follow timelines and I'm correct.
Yeah.
You got a second yet, no.
I'll second Mr. Yagelski's motion.
All right.
I already seconded it.
Yeah, you know, back.
Sorry.
So, we're good.
We didn't hear it, you were too far away from the microphone.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Yagelski and a second by Mr. Novak and Mr. Kessler to read by title only. Further discussion, Mr. Keel?
Under the discussion, just I want to be really clear about what we're doing because it will, if all seven of us vote aye to this, it's gonna look like we're moving forward with it. This is purely preserving timelines, it's not necessarily...
To read by title only is all.
Yes.
That's all it is.
But we're preserving the optionality that a tax could be passed later and that's an important distinction.
We're not voting.
To read by, to read something by title only is...
If we were to do nothing...
And it's first reading.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if we do nothing, then it's dead and it cannot proceed. If we do the first reading, it could proceed in 10 days and we could pass a lit.
Correct.
So I just want people to know exactly like, some people will walk away and think it's still alive and it's passed.
I will draw my second.
I've still got my second.
I don't agree with you if all they're doing is reading a document.
We haven't got that far. You gotta do this as a process, I don't get you guys messing this all up. We have to, it's a process.
Stick it.
Title only is only the, thank you.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Yagelski and a second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor of reading by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Auditor?
Ordinance 2025-10, ordinance modifying local income tax rates, Lepore County.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, who are the names? On the reading?
Mr. Novak.
On the reading of it.
Mr. Novak.
That was the name.
All right. So with that, that is the last of our major business for tonight. The one thing I'm gonna start out with when it comes to council and attorney comments is I appreciate everybody coming out with their feedback. This, this is definitely a hard decision and it gives us a lot of perspective in terms of the different outlooks, regardless of Michigan City and other wheel taxes, the previous process that was followed when it came to the approach, when it came to the public safety lit three years ago, as well as just the personal perspective, you know, regardless of where you live, as well as, where's my token, the challenge. Any other comments?
Close the next time.
Any other comments from members of the council? Mr. Attorney, any comments?
Hold it over, reset, I guess, right?
Well, because the next meeting would be a regular meeting.
But then you, you gotta have a budget, you gotta prove the budget, so...
It's an adoption at a regular meeting.
Is it the regular meeting, so we...
It's advertised already too.
Yep. So, motion adjourned by Mr. Novak, do have a second, second by Mr. Keel, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?